Okay, thank you everybody. Sorry we're a few minutes late. We were in executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters and union negotiation. So we're in over a couple of minutes. Uh, call this meeting back to order at six forty-five P M. I gotta begin with pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty-eight, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteen twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This evening, the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. Um, yeah, so welcome everybody. And on that note, I know the state of emergency is going to be ending soon. We have to get clarification on what's going to happen going forward. But I think our intent is to try to allow public access as much as we can going forward. It just may be the, I think your question is whether the members of the school committee all have to be in person. But I think our intention is to try to keep these going out. If people do wanna participate via remote participation, we're gonna try to keep these go- going forward, just so people know. Okay, we begin tonight with public input. If anybody from the public has anything they'd like to speak upon, uh, speak about that is not on the agenda. Please unmute, raise your hand, wave something. Okay, you're in none. We move on to the student report. Uh, I believe we have Sophia here tonight. Sophia, welcome. I see you on here. Um, does that give your student report for us?
Yes, hi, thank you so much. I'm gonna start off by talking about just academics. Um, with the last day of school being on Wednesday, we're really just focused on finishing this unique year on a strong foot. And without finals this year, most of my classes are really just filled with end of year projects. And with, again, the last day of school coming, um, summer work is being released this week. Um, over the past month, A P exams have been being, have been conducted. Uh, freshmen dial M C A S this week. Uh, sophomores will be returning their Chromebooks at the end of this week, um, because, uh, they're getting new Chromebooks soon. Uh, yesterday juniors were recognized for academic excellence. And this award ceremony is typically held at night with parents in attendance. But again, uh, we accommodated for this year and chose to hold the ceremony, uh, during second month yesterday. And the same awards were held for the sophomores and freshmen today. With graduation tomorrow, all grades are excited to watch the seniors graduate and be able to accomplish great things. Also, the seniors are completing Senior Week where they celebrated that prom on Monday, um, which was just so great to see everyone so happy and having such a great time. Another great success was the senior block party that Student Council helped coordinate. Um, just after a hard year and a half, it's amazing to see, uh, that the seniors are getting the recognition and fun that they really deserve. Um, our sports right now are doing great. Uh, both boys and girls track are having a phenomenal season as they took the Cal League titles yesterday, finishing with a fourteen and oh combined record and a victory over Blythe Field. Girls tennis and boys tennis are working hard, uh, each with a five hundred season and both have matches today. The girls team has their senior night tonight as well. Um, the girls lacrosse team is standing right now with a two to seven record. Uh, boys lacrosse had a three to eight record and had a tight seventy-six victory over Blythe Field yesterday. Basketball has had an amazing season with a record of ten to one. They had their senior night last night where they beat Moverport. With this victory, they claimed the Cal title. Um, baseball is having a strong season, uh, with an eight to five record. Registration for fall sports started and with that, um, many sports are participating in different summer leagues. And those are gonna be starting at the end of the month. Also at the end of the month, uh, most sports are invited to train at the school, um, with trainers from Athletic Evolution, which is a gym that typically only girls soccer and football, uh, prepare for pre-teenage math. But we've had such great experience with them. We're including, um, the entire North Reading sports programs. And it'll, they're gonna come to the high school to help us all prepare together. Um, Mr. Lantini's basketball camp, um, is also being held this summer. And that's really just a great, uh, camp because it brings the whole community together. As it's for many ages and it's run by the high schoolers. So they connect with the upcoming, uh, classes and they'll get community service hours. Um, in the arts, um, the district art show was released last week and Mr. Dexter held it virtually this year via, uh, Google slides. Masters, uh, the Drowsy Chaperone finished two weeks ago. And the new musical will be announced today. Piano band and jazz band had concerts last week and parents were able to attend to those. Um, but they're also all posted on the His King YouTube channel. Um, and then for clubs, most clubs are having their last meetings this week. Um, and many are in the process of electing new officers. And N H S, uh, chose to push their induction ceremony to the fall. Um, but, uh, set date has not been determined. And SLAM accepted their twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two mentors this week. Um, for student work, I did not, um, get together like a concrete piece, but I just wanted to talk about my experience with, um, virtual A P exams. So I last year took the A P's exam and then this year I took to the, uh, English and, um, bio. So with those, it was really great to see the just differences in the two years of exams during this pandemic. Um, so last year it was only two questions in forty minutes. This year was a full exam and it just the way that all of our teachers just worked so hard this year is really great on how prepared we were for that exam, even though it was such a different setup. For instance, we had just these practice exams in the testing portal. So that test anxiety was really relieved because we knew exactly what to expect. And then in addition to that, um, College Board with it being a hybrid style testing. So some tests were in school, some were virtual. Um, there were three different chunks of test dates. Um, and with that, some students got to shift around where, where and when they could take their test. For instance, um, a lot of people had complications between the, um, chemistry and statistics tests because they were on the same day and really close times. So those students were able to take one of the tests at a later date. So they didn't have to have that super compact one day. So just almost as a whole, I guess, this virtual testing experience, it was just really great to see that we're able to overcome this super big obstacle that's pandemic to make sure that we're still getting everything out of these A P, um, courses.
Excellent, thank you so much Sophia. Questions, comments? Okay, I would say, I, I, I saw the art show. I thought it was really good. I think that, um, you know, it's nice to see that things are opening up a little bit more. And if this came here, I know that they were, you know, certain, certain classes were more impacted this year than others. And so it was nice to see the art come out. I saw the Drowsy Chaperone was out as well. Um, my other question for you Sophia is, I know that before COVID hit, we approved no finals for these seniors. We really haven't been able to evaluate that. But with, you know, I, I, I guess my question is like, how do you feel as a student without a final at the end? Because like when I went to school, that's all you did, you know? You have finals at the end. And now with teaching and learning being quite different, I think there's been less of an emphasis already on no final. I mean, do you feel that, I guess, what are your thoughts on that overall? Because like, I feel like finals are supposed to, in a way, make sure that you learn something that year. But I always found myself just trying to relearn something that I've learned four months ago and I didn't find a lot of value in that. But, and what are your thoughts on not having finals this year?
Uh, basically exactly how you're just putting it with, it really is that like we need to just like dig back into random details, um, from what you learned like six months ago. But at the same time, a lot of my classes are doing these projects where we're incorporating all topics that we've done over the course of the year. So we're reaching back to the broad, um, units that we looked into, but without that stress of taking like a written test. Um, so it's, it's definite, I like, think that it's a lot better than taking the final itself because I, myself is more of like a hands-on person. I like being able to explain how I learned it rather than showing it in a test, if that makes sense.
That's, that's, thank you. Any other questions?
Sophia, this is Rich. I was just gonna say that, um, I appreciate how enthusiastic you are about the, uh, the A P, the, uh, A P exam process. You know, despite your, uh, you know, the fact that you're happy not to do finals, it sounds like you were pretty pleased with the process for the A P exam. Um, keep that in mind, uh, down the road, that, that there are students who really like those tests.
Yeah, it was definitely a rewarding process.
I'll just, I'll just say, when I said to Sophia, how many A P's did you take? She said, oh, just two. But, uh, yeah, it was great. And the teachers really worked closely with Mr. LaPresta, sort of identified the different strategies for virtual. There were some that we said to do in person, just based on the specific nature, but just about, uh, everyone. And there are actually things that you said, you and, uh, Diana also liked about the virtual and some of the practices too, right Sophia? So, um, really interesting to see there, but great work. And thank you for all that you've done, uh, with your reports to us this year. I think you said you have to run again, so I hope you run again and, uh, come back with us in the future.
Thank you so much. Yes, I do have to rerun, but hopefully I can be back next year.
And what, and what are your summer plans, if I may ask?
Um, I am a competitive soccer player, so I have a lot of camps lined up.
Okay, good luck and enjoy your summer. We appreciate you coming to the meeting this year and giving your insight. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, as usual, we're gonna jump around on the agenda a little bit to try to attract the people that are here so that you don't have to listen to some of the boring stuff if you don't want to. So the first thing we're gonna jump to for new business is CPAC, uh, North Reading Special Education Parent Advisory Council, Parent Advisory Council. We have the co-chairs, Kathy O'Donnell, Boosted and, uh, Kim Piper here, as well as, uh, we're joined by the Director of Student Services and the Advocate. So thank you everyone for coming. Um, it's O'Donnell, Boosted and or it's Piper, I don't know who's leading up, I'm guessing Kathy might be. You're muted, you have to unmute yourself Kathy.
So I do have a presentation and, um, oh, that was wrong. Um, okay, this might do it, yes. They moved the buttons.
They did move the buttons, that looks a little different now. There you go.
Yeah, so I would like to, uh, say how happy we are at North Reading CPAC to be speaking to you today. Um, let's see, I think this is our, um, personnel chart, as it were. Co-chairs, myself and Kim, Kim Piper. Uh, website, Kim put out a new website, uh, this, this, uh, this year since summertime. Publicity, social media and email, Marian Keith, Kathy O'Donnell, Boston and Kimberly Piper. And we have an early and elementary, um, committee, which will be Nick McLeod and Nikki Tosi. And I like this, um, chart because it shows that people have areas of specialty, but we all, um, work really closely with each other. We also had another, um, very important early, um, volunteer, Jennifer McGee, who is, um, she said she didn't have time, so we said we would give her a leave of absence. She's not excused, she has to come back. Um, so there we go. So, uh, Kimberly and I, um, volunteered as co-chairs in June twenty twenty. And at that time, we actually sat down and wrote up some goals. And this is what they were. Does anybody have any questions? You can just break in if you do. No? Okay. So our first goal, of course, is to fulfill our legal mission to assist the school district, um, in hiring committees and, uh, any other, um, meetings. Then we wanted to improve direct service assistance to parents, parent-to-parent type of a thing. And so our first goal was to increase organization visibility and build the mailing list. Um, we wanted, we are required to provide one parent training during the year. We wanted to provide more than one parent training during the year and we were able to do that. We wanted to distribute resources and information. For example, parent-generated webinars, handouts, visuals and those about events. And we were able to do that. Then we also, uh, had an idea to outreach to families in town whose students were over age twenty-two. Because it's, um, all of our kids are gonna be older than twenty-two, so we were interested in seeing what happens next. This goal was not achieved maybe next year. And we wanted to start at least one parent working group, which is parents working together to help each other. And these are, um, our activities. In the, in the summer, we attended CPAC Summer School. That's a new, um, uh, initiative, um, from the Federation for Children with Special Needs. And we found that to be very, very helpful. Um, we were members of the, um, Parent Advisory Council for the, for the whole year, starting with the reopening, uh, of the school, um, some of that work. And, uh, we, um, we were very happy. Cynthia, Director of Student Services was so great. We met, uh, periodically with her and our first meeting, Student Services and CPAC happened in August of twenty twenty. In November of twenty twenty, we participated on the Hiring Committee for the Interim Bachelor of Principal. We were able to put together our first webinar on financial and legal planning in February. We had a parent survey at, uh, mailing list builder along with the idea of what do parents need? Then we had our first monthly meeting to go over the results of that survey, what do parents need? We had also, uh, pulling over the survey results, Student Services and CPAC meeting. Uh, in March additionally, we had tiered, uh, focused monitoring, uh, participation. Uh, so on their checklist interview with CPAC. In March, we had in collaboration with the Community Impact Team, uh, a webinar on wandering. In April, we participated in, uh, another Hiring Committee. Uh, we had World Autism Awareness Month with Light It Up Blue. Um, then, uh, our new website went live. We had the One Essential, um, Basic Rights webinar, we must do every year, um, on eligibility and evaluation. A follow-up Student Services and CPAC meeting. We had a webinar, The Big Picture Lessons From a Special, Special Need, Needs Parent. Our end of the year meeting, um, another Student Services and CPAC meeting. And here we are with our end of the year report to the school committee. Oh, and we have a budget side. This is how much, uh, we spent, uh, during the year, taking it to the school district, who, uh, pays our four hundred and fifty dollar membership to, um, Mass Pack. And we get one free, um, uh, webinar from them. We, uh, created our website and domain. We experimented with different kinds of, um, publicity and we really liked, Facebook actually gave us a bit of strength for the buck. And then, uh, this is where our income came. We were able to get donations from the community for the Community Impact Team. Um, the financial planner, um, donated and we had, um, some of the parents donating. So, um, going to our, and if you have any questions, please do let me know. Our goal for next year, first of all, I'd like to say that, um, a lot of the leadership right now are parents of autistic children, but we do not want to be limited to that area. We are the CPAC for, uh, every parent and every, uh, of a disabled child in the district. So we'll, we'll try next year to, um, get some participation from those parents that we can have a representative understanding, a better understanding of what all the needs are. Uh, so we are going to continue to fulfill our legal mission to assist the school district. And our goal for twenty-one, twenty-two, we want to have it be the year of the I E P. We want all of the CPAC member parents' knowledge of the I E P processes regards to improve. I think that will be a tremendous benefit to the families and also to the, um, staff as well when they deal with people who are more knowledgeable about what's going on. We're gonna provide, uh, six parent training webinars. One is going to be, um, Student Services is going to have a meet and greet in September with Cynthia Connet. A lot of our parents aren't exactly sure what the, um, organizational structure of special education is, starting from, you know, who's the liaison, um, chairperson, stuff like that. So you, you can amaze, people don't, um, people take a while to settle into knowledge like that. We will have a basic rights, uh, presentation, hopefully in October with the C I T. We are going to, um, um, uh, provide, um, advertising for the presentation on mental health. We're gonna promote it to our members. Um, Gina Sacco is gonna give a seminar on inclusion, uh, classroom best practices. And we hope to, um, combine forces with local CPACs from other towns. So we're, so in addition to the one basic right presentation that we get because North Reading, uh, pays the membership fee, we're gonna try and line up the other, uh, two in collaboration with the other CPACs. And then we'll have another, uh, topic that we haven't yet decided yet. Um, this line no longer applies, uh, the report from the Inclusion Classroom Committee. Uh, we hope to, uh, collaborate with the Recreation Department to make sure that some of the, uh, town recreation services are inclusive. And we would like to make progress on, um, our bylaws. We need to have official bylaws, um, budget. And we want to, um, meet all the requirements of the open meeting law, which include publicizing your agenda and your minutes. And then the last thing that I wanted to bring forward is that we wanted to thank people, uh, in the school district and the community who made our first year so much better by pretty much welcoming us with open arms. Uh, Cynthia Connet, uh, Gina Sacco, these two, uh, are from, um, Student Services. Patrick Daly, everybody should know that. Uh, Scott Buckley, who is, um, wonderfully the liaison to the, um, CPAC. So we, uh, he's been very helpful. And then Amy Lukowicz from the C I T. So, uh, I'm open for questions if you want me to go back to any previous slides. Otherwise, I will, um, fast for the presentation, uh, back.
Thank you very much Kathy. Um, I wanted to answer the questions. I wanted to thank you and, uh, Kim both for stepping up. I know that we, you know, had, uh, Mr. McManus for a number of years doing this. And I know that there was a lot of, um, hesitation for anybody else to step up. And so I appreciate, as you said, this is something that we need to have in this district. I think it can be a very useful group. So I really very much appreciate you stepping up and, you know, taking on the role and, you know, learning in it and developing in it. And so if there's more that we can do to help, you know, please let us know. And I know that, you know, Cynthia and Gina do a great job, um, here. And I know they appreciate also having, um, you know, advocates for, for the students. So thank you.
Um, I see that Kim is here, so Kim, you can wave, wave your handshake, she's, uh, the coach here. And I think I forgot, did I have the early, um, we have an early, um, intervention and elementary committee. One of the reasons why, uh, Kim and myself were so interested in taking on this role is that we did a lot of learning by experience. And we wanna make sure that the other families, um, don't have to do all that learning by themselves. So we, in particular, wanna reach out to them and, um, give them some support. And then my, um, son is, uh, preparing for transition. So we'll probably end up, uh, having some activities around that too. So I think we pretty much have the full age range, um, being handled. And then we're also going to try and get, uh, participation from parents whose children have different, uh, disabilities as well.
All right, any other questions, Alan?
I just wanna say thank you Kathy, Kim, Marian. It's been really nice partnering with you guys. And I know we've kind of talked about this in our leadership meeting, but I just really want to emphasize that you've had such a big impact in such a short amount of time. And you've captured all of your activities so nicely in your slideshow presentation. So that was great. Um, I also wanna thank you for your participation in tiered focus monitoring. Um, for those of you who don't know what that is, that is the process by which the Department of Education comes to the district and does an audit on our compliance within the district. Um, we were really excited to learn that we had zero findings on this audit. We had zero items that required corrective action. Um, that's really a tribute to everybody in the district, from Dr. Daly to the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, principals, teachers, school committee members. Because in order for us to be compliant at that level, it really requires an understanding of resource allocation and what is required in special education. So I just wanna say thank you to everybody for that. Um, that was great news. And Kathy, again, thank you for participating in that. And I'm looking forward to working with you guys over the course of next year and, um, continue the momentum that you've already started.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I was just gonna add that I'm really grateful that you're coming to the school committee to present. This information is really helpful and I, I think we're doing it annually, right? So I'm glad that we're doing this and look forward to it. So thank you for that thing.
I would, uh, of course, you know, if we have any concerns or any information, we will, um, bring, we won't wait necessarily the whole year. But we really have a service mentality. Um, it's hard when you're, um, uh, a beginning special needs parent and you're, as I was telling you, your ability to absorb information. You know, learning so much about disability, you know, you just, so we're gonna try and, uh, and, uh, get them all started the right way.
Kathy Daly?
I just wanted to thank you all for, for all that you do for our students and, you know, for participating in the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council, for being a part of those, uh, you know, selection committees. Um, I want to make sure that you're, you're all aware of and I, I hope that some of you can be represented in what I'm going to do in a couple of weeks on the twenty-second with our N R P S twenty twenty-five visioning. I've seen a lot of goals, uh, suggestions and ideas coming in already about inclusion and, and work with students. So I'm sure that, um, that some of you are gonna be involved in that work as well. But always feel free to reach out to me at any time. I think Cynthia and Gina are, are the best people to be working with, but I'm also very happy and very welcome to come. Um, even just to pop into a meeting, just to say hello, to introduce myself, to put a name with a face or behind a mask face so you can see. Um, I've had beers this whole time, people don't even know that. So, um, I'm more than happy to come to, to some of our meetings. And I, I will say, in the spirit of inclusion, there'll be a nice transition as we work with this game. Cause I was able to speak a really great- as we work with this team. Cause I was able to speak a really great inclusion uh lesson today in her class um that had uh a student in another class that wrote a play and they got to perform that. Um it was a great it was a great um dance battle, really, between Flatt the Hedgehog and Strawberry Shortcake, right? It was awesome. But it was just seeing uh that it was written by a student um who was not in the theater class, I believe, um who then was able to have her production performed and students from both classes working together was truly, truly fantastic. So I just think that's just a great story of inclusion that I was so so lucky to witness today. So I wanted to share that as well.
Hello. Any comments? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you to the uh CPAC members for coming. As I believe you are welcome to say, just like Sophia. Janine wanted me to point out, if you're waiting to be dismissed, Sophia, you can stay as long as you'd like or hit leave as well. But thank you all very much. Um we're gonna move on. And I see Mrs. Kane, you've been referencing Mrs. Kane. And I believe she's here for one of our subcommittee updates. We talk about fine art subcommittee sometimes. And so I think we're gonna kinda just jump to that first. And I don't know, Kathy Daly, if you mind, I need to kinda introduce her to this.
If I could, one of the topics that we talked um about during our finance, uh I'm sorry, our our five subcommittees has been some of the uh activities that we're hoping to resume um with our um with our different arts groups. And one of them is this uh trip that Mrs. Kane has worked very hard. If you may recall, these are things that we've had planned and scheduled that due to COVID has to be canceled, postponed, or otherwise as you imagine. Um so we were hoping to have this on here tonight as a as a as a vote. Um it's it's not on the agenda at that point, but I hope that what we can have is a little bit of a discussion in terms of also representation for the details, to lay all the foundation and groundwork for us to discuss a little bit um as a part of this agenda in order to then um make some decisions moving forward for Mrs. Kane so that we would be able to vote that officially at an upcoming meeting. So is it okay to let Mrs. Kane share a little bit um at this time?
Yeah, absolutely.
Would you like me to share my screen, Mrs. Kane, if you have something?
I I have I have something I can present from here if that's okay.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome. Hi, good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone's face. Um Allison Kane. And um I am um the performing arts manager. Um trying to figure out ways to keep these kids involved. We had a Disney trip planned um pre-COVID. Um it's uh some of you remember. It's something we try to do once every four years is to give the performing arts students a real opportunity to go out outside of Massachusetts and and perform and take classes with professionals. And um Disney provides um a an educational setting where they get to go to school during the day and take classes based on their um specific uh art form, so instrumental theater or vocal music. And then they have the chance to also perform as well. Um unfortunately, that was shut down. So we've been just kind of trying to keep it going when we thought it could be safe. And so um we're looking to April, May of twenty twenty two. So um I'm gonna present here. One second. Um let's see. Takes me one second here. Okay, so um the kind of the overall, the way that the week would work, but not a full week, but after school on a Tuesday, um we would leave, we would depart North Reading, and we'd head down, we'd fly into Orlando. Um and the students would um stay on Disney property with us. They would go through um uh the all the different parks are kind of planned out because different classes take place in different parks. Uh they typically go to class for three and four hours. Sometimes it's two hours break, two hours. Sometimes it's, you know, a full, you know, set from like nine to one. Um and then they're allowed to play inside the park. Um one of the classes they take is a pro techniques class. That's one of the theater classes where they get to go in and see how they do all of the lasers and the fireworks and how they set that up. And then after the class, they play in the park. And then that night, they get to kind of go and watch how it works, which is a really cool class. Um our concert band, our jazz band, our marching band students will get to perform. They get adjudicated, which means um they actually get scored. Um they can also take master class. Um Notorious and Corus will perform, be adjudicated and take a master class. And all other um theatrical um students will be master classes with the Disney professionals. There's no performance based for them. However, there's a portfolio review. So if some of those students are looking to move on after high school, they have a professional take a look at some of their work. We do come home on Sunday night. Um the estimated cost for this trip is eighteen hundred dollars. I'm actually the one um working through all of this. I used to um be a travel agent. So if I can cut out the middleman and keep the costs low, I personally think that I can get this cost lower. But this is based on the highest ticket price I can find before I even start negotiations. So I figure it's easier to say it's going to be this and then make a lower um bid and then present that to the parents than it is to say it's going to be more. Cause as a parent, I would never want someone to do that. I would want to just know this is what it is. We have payment set up um and they're every other month. Um we're gonna use Unibank um for direct deposit. Um so that way we don't have to worry about collecting cash or money or checks or anything along those lines. Um this trip is non-refundable, but I wanna say that with all of the new stuff that has happened, it's non-refundable, meaning if a student decides they no longer wanna go, or their parent is like, yeah, well, I'm not going anymore. That's non-refundable. But if there's a COVID situation or or any of the things that we've had nowadays, there's a clause in the contract that say that's an excusable reason to get a full refund. So we say that it's not refundable, meaning keep your grades up. You gotta, you know, we want everybody to go and and to be good, honest citizens of North Reading. But extenuating circumstances, there is a clause in there. Um there's a permission slip for the parents. Um and then the chaperones that we're looking for would be um already set. Peter Kane, Ben Owens, John Eldridge, Chrissy Bowman, Andrea Gagman, Dan Muse, and Lexi Muse. These are all staff in the Performing Arts Department. Some some of them teach after school in like marching band or the musical, but they're all staff members um part of North Reading. We're gonna hold a parent meeting, and I hope to um kind of put that out very soon for those parents. And then we've communicated to the eighth graders once we do that. And then we'll be holding another parent meeting in the fall and a follow-up one right before we leave. That'll be an in-person parent meeting. Um I already kind of talked about the classes that we take, which is kind of cool. The breakdown of how much all of the estimates are, this is based on two years ago, where the cost increased, as well as my kind of, you know, research. Again, I haven't negotiated some of it. So I think I can get these flights a little bit lower. But I'd rather be safe than sorry. And then we do a lot of fundraising. Um students who were already going two years ago, I still have their fundraising money. So we're gonna apply that right to those kids already if they choose to go. And I think that's a really cool way that then they can re-fundraise again. And some students might not pay a dime for this trip if if they fundraised as strongly as they were before. Um it's a really cool opportunity. It's once every four years. That way they have other opportunities to do other trips and other experiences without worrying about the financial ramifications for different family members. So that's the trip.
Excellent. Comments? Questions? Janine, move around.
Um uh how many do three or ten attend?
So we had eighty scheduled to go with us last last time, two years ago. So I'm budgeted, that's why I have eight chaperones. I'm assuming we're gonna have about eighty. But we if we need more, then we'll get another chaperone. And if we have less than, we won't take as many chaperones.
Okay. And then one last question then. If for some reason your student is unable to attend, the money is still their responsibility unless you can find another performing arts student to take their place.
Right. So what we, sorry. Yeah, absolutely. What we've done in the past is we we have to have a cutoff just because I have to purchase flights. Um so then every time I've done this, I've always had a waitlist. So what we've typically done is, and it's actually only happened once or twice, when a parent says, oh, my gosh, they have to go to their dance recital, they can no longer make the trip. Um can I get a refund? And I'm like, uh, no, like you, like I can't do that. However, I have Joey Smith right here, and Joey can take your place. So that's what that means. That's explained to the parents ahead of time. We do have that waitlist. But the whole point is unless there's an extreme extenuating circumstance, they are they need to pay that money. Um and that's that's what that means.
Um, three things. I'll start with the question Janine should have followed up with. Uh if you need more chaperones, can Janine go? Wait, that was gonna be me.
Yep. Everyone wanted to make that joke.
I'm gonna go with my second class.
Oh, cool. Right. Uh two questions, Miss Kane. Uh cause you know, really, you uh you know, as always, you're completely well thought of, far more than I ever would. Um the I I appreciate what you were saying about thinking ahead in case there's some, you know, if not COVID-like event, some extenuating circumstance that really complicates things. You mentioned there's a clause in the contract. Is that with the park? Is that with the airline? You know, separate, just going through you and not through an agency? I'm curious.
Yeah. So um in discussions, so Disney has its own um booking agency. So if if you say were to go, you could hire someone else, but they would still be talking to Disney's booking agency. So you're going through a middleman to go to a middleman. So by eliminating that, I just called the Disney booking agency and say, what's the situation? And since COVID happened and we already had to deal with that, this it, you know how it when someone say um is diagnosed with COVID, there's an actual like state database that they're on. Uh so you for extenuating circumstances such as that, you have to prove like with a medical or or the database or a, you know, a doctor's note or something along those lines. Disney has added that into their their clause as a as a way to get a refund. Um airline tickets won't pay you the money back. They keep it in a bank. So the bank, depending on the reason, can be up to a year. You book it within the year, but you can use it up to three years after, or you have to book it within two years. It's a medical issue. So the money's still there for you. You just don't take that flight as far as airlines go.
Gotcha. Um my other question was just concerning kids that two years ago signed up for it and um are still in school now, but maybe choose not to go, or other kids that fundraised but have since graduated. The do those funds, are they just gonna be applied to take the whole price down? Is that the idea?
So yes, because we have to we have to rent buses and a few other things. So we're hoping it it almost always kind of susses out. We're gonna pay some of that money, say a graduate who had that fundraising money that was in there. They got eighty seven dollars and fourteen cents, and this graduate had a hundred and two dollars and so much. You know, and you start to just chunk chunk it away, which is why I think that I'm I'm very certain that it will go down. But I can't say that for a hundred percent because smarter the airline tickets could just skyrocket. The faster I can get them booked, the faster.
Right. And eighteen hundred for this experience seems like such a reasonable price that if it goes down, that's fantastic. But you're not starting in this early point.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Other questions? Alan? So uh um this is Kane. I'll help you with you. First quick question is, I noticed it's April twenty sixth through May twentieth. I think that's the week after April break.
It is.
Is there any, I mean, what was the thinking on that as opposed to doing it during April?
So because we have a very robust international um travel group that travels every April, um since I've been at North Reading, we've always traveled the week after. And so that's the last sixteen years. Um because we didn't want to clash with that. I I can tell you, I know of at least six students who are doing the the Japan trip and the Disney trip next year.
That was that was my participation, but I was just checking. Um and just overall comments, I would just say that, I mean, I think one of the one of the highlights, when I talk to other people, you know, about North Reading, I think one of the highlights at North Reading is the performing arts, you know, and and all the things that you have your fingers on. And so I just wanna thank you for that. I mean, I'm just very glad that you're not negotiating contracts, too. You can tell you can tell Peter that, you know, I'd much rather not have to negotiate against you. I'm thinking, thank you so bad for the travel agents. But no, I mean, you you do a fantastic job here. And, you know, you really are one of the, I mean, I think of all the things that happen in North Reading, like every school has sports and they have teams that are good. I mean, I think it really stands out at North Reading Performing Arts Fair. I think a lot of that has to do with you. So thank you so much.
That's very kind. Thank you very much. It's it's a passion.
Yeah.
Um.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. And then um I know earlier they said something was announced today. So I thought maybe you guys would wanna know.
Oh, nice. Awesome.
That will be in the near days next year.
That's all. Very cool. My kids will be very excited. One of the few shows I've actually seen on Broadway.
Oh, so much fun. So much fun.
So again, and and I apologize if we didn't get this on the agenda to officially vote. But I think knowing my committee members, I think we get our kind of like informal feedback. I think it's fairly certain that you can uh start moving forward. Um we're not gonna officially vote, but I I would say that I very much encourage this and and appreciate this and kind of support of this. I don't know, whatever the else thing. Janine, do you support this?
I would definitely, yes.
Diana?
I'm very supportive.
Chris? Absolutely. Chris?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. So without taking a plural vote, I think you sort of have an idea of where we're leaning towards all of this. So we appreciate it. And, you know, thank you so much for coming tonight and.
Thank you. Thank you for thank you for squeezing me in. I know it's always a tight timeframe. So thank you, everyone. It's a busy time of year.
Absolutely. Wonderful. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Um I guess we'll continue on these other committees. And Chris, with your hand down. Please. Um we'll move on to the other committee reports, and that's where we're at on the agenda. Um Finance Planning came out on May twenty fifth. I would say we just went over Tom Meeting, War and Art and nothing else, really.
That's right.
We get to fine art. Yes. Anything else for fine art that was discussed, fine art subcommittee?
No, I mean, I I guess I should have, we should have said this uh uh while I was here, but uh just more understanding of what they've done over the years to uh deal with COVID and all the differences they had to make. But uh so we're looking forward to talk about plans for next year, which is exciting. And by the way, the uh the art program, the art uh presentation, I thought was fantastic. And we talked about, it's a couple, that's something we've talked about a couple times over the over the year in meetings. And uh I hope they hope we're able to continue that even as we go back to in-person art presentations. I thought that was a great way to get it out in the virtual.
The virtual.
Yeah.
Yeah. Very good. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My I'm sorry. My kid is saying like, that's a seventh grader. You think you can do that in two years, three years or whatever? Like, no, that's a seventh grader. I was like, those are really, really professional.
Um. I I just wanted to, they participated in the uh Pegasus, they had a a virtual art show competition as well. And and many of the uh duties from North Reading participated. Now that was that was excellent to see.
Athletic subcommittee? Hands, please.
Football life? We want to have each other going.
At least you take jokes at these things, though.
There was a question about the need on um the the sports complex down in, you know, what takes precedence? Do we, you know, put money towards the life or the film, um the football film needs to be returned? Is that their right terminal date? So there was that, you know, healthy discussion in regards to that in.
Yeah, there was a book recommendation they were looking at, like starting a few regional schools.
For the class. And.
It's on numbers.
Yeah. And then over at the Hood School, they've been re- um vitalizing the uh field over there. And I believe they're putting a fence and they are installing a batting cage. I think it was up to like ninety feet, but they don't need um the entire length of it. And I believe it was donated by a family, and I hope remember the family's name off the top of my head. So I just wanted to say thank you to that family.
I think it came through the the diamond club.
The diamond club, okay. Yeah.
But they were um so that's that's excellent. That that's part of it. There is a at the little school, the softball field, there's a cage there. And now there's one at the Hood School as well as what we have up here at this complex. It's sort of shared by the two teams, um softball, baseball. Um yeah, I just wanted to add, certainly the the conversation around the lights, you know, the the field, the turf replacement is also critical, very important. You know, one thinking um is that, you know, the if you have lights, you don't need to, you know, the use of the term field can be lessened because now everyone's fighting for one place to have lights. And if you have lights in some other areas, we can we can continue to uh function later in the day in more places. But there's a lot of conversation, I think, around the light. Certainly connects with the start times, um but also um we just certainly see a huge benefit for the entire community for all different kinds of events, and and not just. we just certainly see a huge benefit for the entire community for all different kinds of events, in, in not just athletics, you know, marching band, performing arts. You can do a lot outside with lights as well i- in the later hours. We have started to install some of the lights. It's sort of a four-phase project that's been introduced. Um, we were able to do some of that already on the all-purpose field, and we do, uh, wanna take some next steps soon to start really having a, a discussion, um, we've been working with folks in the town side as well to talk about, you know, where our community managers at the town to try to move this forward. I think there's a lot of exciting possibilities for, for many different groups, youth groups, not just at school groups that use those fields, um, at all different colors. So.
Well, you build it, they will cover. So, um, okay, there's no subcommittee meeting scheduled?
Now we. We just finished, or are we gonna go back to?
I think we've addressed all the guests here, so I think we have to go back to the top now and start with continued events and the return in-person update.
Yeah, we're, we're back. So, um, we did, we, we had a, a great couple of days. There's a, as far as the COVID-nineteen update, I, I thought I'd be able to not report anything, but did have one, I had one, uh, in late May, um, that I did share out today. Um, the numbers for the town and for the schools are very close. Um, and we're, we're about one, uh, active case, if I'm correct. So that's great. Um, our director of public health, Mr. Bracy, and our, our public health nurse, Ms. Hovey, as well as a few of our school nurses, assisted with our, uh, vaccination clinics that were offered, um, at our schools due to the extreme heat. We had, uh, we did move that indoors, um, but we had condensed them into two days. Not sure necessarily what that means, whether, um, you know, a lot of students are vaccinated in other ways, or, or there wasn't as much of a need. I think from what I've seen, a lot of people that wrote to me asking to cancel was because they were able to get something even sooner at CBS or whatnot. So I think there was a lot of availability. But I do, uh, think it was good that we were able to extend and offer this support for those students who didn't need it. And, um, so that was there. We are going to have two days, um, later that will be sent out. That will be a second dose opportunity for anyone who's vaccinated here or anywhere. So it'll be another chance if you were vaccinated somewhere else, they'll come here. So more to come on those, um, events soon. Our nurses, as always, were fantastic with that.
What was another thing? Cause I made a, some quick comments on that one. So, I mean, my, my son did his vaccination there. And I just, I, I appreciated it as a parent because my son doesn't do well in the child. And so because it was a kind of a case, because it was the nurse that he knew from the little school, not only that, but as soon as he walked in, the nurse knew him.
Yeah.
And knew that he wasn't gonna do well with everybody else around. And I would just like to point out that, like, she did great and told him aside and brought him to another area because, again, I mean, as a, as a student in the middle school, like if he was having, you know, an emotional reaction to something, I thought it was, you know, I just applaud the way that they handled it. And so the nice thing about, you know, people that knew him, that were able to do that, and so he, you know, felt comfortable.
Yeah, that's great. And it, it was a good local, um, a good local scene. Like we, you know, just, just to clarify that too, I did send, share something out with staff this week as a reminder and just to update the community and you as well, that, you know, we certainly, um, you know, that I think the director of public health, the board of health would say, you know, there's this idea that vaccinations are very helpful in moving us forward. But there is no clear direction from the state around what vaccinations would look like for students or staff, whether anything would be required. There's been no indication of that, uh, in any way today, and I will communicate that if there is. It's obviously the topic of vaccinations for adults and students is something that will come up in class, topically, especially in certain current events classes. Um, but I, I, you know, I generally reminded our staff that it's, it's not appropriate to ask students about their, um, vaccination or staff. It's not appropriate to, um, you know, take a position on whether it's the right thing or not the right thing. It's a very personal, private decision that needs to be made by families. And, um, I think that was, um, a clear message that was sent out. I did hear some concerns from parents that this, that there wouldn't be, and I believe we talked about it a little bit in our last meeting, that there wouldn't be any kind of, um, shaming of students for making one choice or another. So I think it's really important to communicate that out. At least we did do that. Um, as I alluded to, we did have to call two heat days this year, um, which I, I thought we are through all these, um, interesting days, but we did have the extreme heat. Just to be very clear with everyone that we, you know, we, we considered all the various factors that were going on, the extreme heat in the classroom, um, the fact that there's always being some of these, uh, elementary schools especially, that students are wearing masks is an additional factor. Uh, and the way that we're using fans and air circulation is different this year. You can't do some of the things we would do even in a typical year. And a typical year can get very, very warm in those rooms. So I think all those factors considered, I, I spoke with my administrative team who felt very strongly. Um, um, I would say especially Ms. Molly and, and Dr. McKay, in their building, just really wanted to make sure that we had, um, the, the support for the, for the students and staff. So by doing the half-day, we were able to stay with our common learning guidelines, um, within the parameters, not have to make those days up. And we also, you know, the oppressive heat started around ten-thirty-ish. We looked to account, so we only had an hour, an hour and a half or so before we were, and we were able to schedule some, you know, outdoor things at that time, so that's, um, less of a concern. And I, I did feel, you know, certainly the short notice, uh, it's never ideal. We gave at least, you know, a, a day's notice about that, um, as much as we could. But I do think that there were, um, you know, there were some folks that didn't understand, said, you know, I went to school and it was hot as a kid. But this year is very different in, in terms of, uh, what kids are going through and, you know, what safety becomes a concern with students, um, breathing. I did hear from a few folks saying this is a day we should waive the mask requirement. That, that is really beyond my control. I, it's a state mandate right now from the Department of Public Health and from the governor and from the Department of Education that masks are required for staff and students indoors. There's no, um, no changes to that that I'm aware of. And so the district did communicate to us what we could do and what we could not do. They did say we could not do remote learning. And they said we could, that we could have frequent mask breaks, but they certainly did not say that we could, uh, remove those restrictions during the school day. So they, they sort of also recommended considering half-days and, um, that's why we made that decision.
For what it's worth, I support it. I thought it was a right decision. And I also applaud the, I mean, food services also had a quick change as well. I know that they, you know, they had to do.
Get some grabby goes.
Half-day meal for all three. I think they did what they did, so.
Four-day the after-school programs and making all that work. You know, our team is, is always responded very quickly to those, uh, to those changes. So I, I'm hoping we are, in other words, we have, I think, uh, after tomorrow, right? So four days. Hopefully, uh, there's no more curveballs, but.
Last Thursday.
Um, I do have summer programs on here, but I do have as a new item, summer two thousand twenty-one, so I may just, um, just work with that. The, the item of the, uh, you, you should probably address that, but should I jump to that?
Or what, the summer stuff?
Yeah, summer twenty twenty-one.
All right. Okay, so I'm gonna continue this.
Yeah.
Moving on, you wanna go to the summer twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, I think. I know. I think I, that was an item there, and I just figured it was a good segue. The main thing I wanted to share here, um, you know, we do have our extended school year program, which will include some continuation of, um, things from the school year that would be able to continue. One thing that we are looking at with the, the pool test and continuing that window, we're gonna look and see whether there's any pool testing opportunities for beyond this year. There are some, uh, funding available. And so my thought is to continue things like that. If, if there's an interest and it's covered by the state, why not continue that? Um, it's sort of my thought. There's also, they are going to support us with at-home testing with the bidax kits for folks, so they can test for symptoms at home prior to coming to school. So we're going to investigate and explore all of that as long as it's covered by, uh, the state. We figure that just more resources and support. So that's a little different from our other summer program, which is the, the Title I program that Mr. Clean has developed. Um, so we've got, um, the, the Conest program, we've got the program Mr. Clean's running during the summer. There is going to be an announcement of a third program that will be the last week of August, if everything gets approved, which it should. It will be the week of August twenty-third to August twenty-seventh. This is an intensive five-day program, four hours a day, twenty hours for the week. It'll, it'll, early literacy, K one-two. Uh, Chris, can you hear us again?
Yeah, you're back.
Alright, so is the last thing you heard when I said about heat days, or did you hear about the summer program?
Yeah, you were, you were just understanding that, uh, the intensive summer program would be twenty hours a week, and that's where you cut.
Okay. So I'll just say, it's twenty hours a week. The, the stipend is, is very inviting to check out our highly qualified teachers. Um, it's an intense program, early literacy and math, and K one-two, mathematics and three, four, eight, and ten. It's very much prescribed. It's written, uh, by the state. There's not a lot of wiggle room in that. There are specials that are offered as well. So I'm on this place where I want advertising, is out there for the teachers and for the families. Um, but I also wanna make sure that it's, that it's approved. And so it's, um, I'm, I'm waiting for that approval coming in from the state. So hopefully it's gonna happen very soon. But I wanted to share that publicly and talk about it. Um, I think it's a great program. So when you hear that some parents are now, what are we doing? The governor's got money for summer programs. It's very specific and the ratios are small. They, they're looking for about ten to twelve students per class. We're talking about a hundred and fifty to two hundred students total. Um, so we'll be looking at those students who are most at risk and most in need of acceleration. Um, some of those students and teachers may be students who participated in other programs as well. It'll really be open to many folks. We will have a, uh, program coordinator, facilitator, that will be looking at the data and working with these, uh, teachers. So it's a great leadership opportunity also for someone to, um, to work this program. So I'm excited about it. Um, just waiting for that approval.
One, one question unrelated, but it's, it's regarding by, by time here, summer. I know that last year for, you know, having a student that was a rising sixth grader, even they didn't get to do the tour of, of the middle school. Are those things gonna start again this year? Like will the sixth graders be offered the ability to come here and do the tour?
The walkabouts and, and such. We will, we will be doing it. For the spring, we didn't do the step-up days. We didn't have the buses come up here. Dr. O'Connell went to each elementary and spoke to the students there. So that was a little different. Uh, but our, our hope is that for the fall, we will be able to, you know, essentially, I hope we're back to normal to the extent possible. You know, all the indications are that, um, you know, mask restrictions will be eased. They're not clear. There could be something still at elementary school, and it, it's still not clear what lunch would look like. What I've heard is that there may be, uh, a mask restriction, but no distancing restriction. And then I still am not sure how that plays out for lunch, which is a huge question because obviously we're still using many of our spaces as overflow lunch areas. So there's a lot of questions that need to be worked out and we haven't had answers for. I don't know that we're gonna get answers until mid-summer.
Okay. Sorry, yeah, I was mostly listening to all of the AMI paper. Um, the, are these just rumors or hearing, or what's the, what, what's the, I mean, is this something official now that like about next year, or is it just what you're hearing so far?
So I, I'm reporting what's been shared in the, in the commissioner's update that I've shared out. The other, you know, I did share out this information with the community. I literally hit send on a blackboard, went into my email, and there was the commissioner's thing, and it was like, so I will share that out with some updates, um, again, as a reminder. But in that update, he did speak to what next year might look like, that there would not be remote learning, uh, expectations. There would not be, um, distancing requirements. That's where they are right now. But there's still some questions within that that, uh, have not been answered. So I, I'm, I'm basing it on what has been shared in those documents.
Thank you.
I've been on the news too. In terms of like the things the mask mandate and all that, so they're gonna have to buy elementary coming out.
Yeah. And I've heard different things, and I just wanted to share like what's been rumored, what's actually happened so far and all that. I figured you.
Yeah. I, I think it's reasonable to say that they're just trying to get through the end of their school year, and, and there are certain things, and I think some legalities possibly that, you know, so even extended school year is a continuation this year, and they need to get through that piece. And maybe when those programs are wrapping, they, they can then make clear distinctions with what next year can look like.
Well, I say, I think it'd be hard to say you're not gonna need the mask next year, because if you say it now, when you still have to go back to the school, then you're gonna have.
Yeah.
Those concerns, but okay. I'll just go and record today. I hope that you don't have to have one next year.
I, I will say too, reading between the lines a little bit with this heat day, as I mentioned, it could not be remote learning, which is something that I, I would personally advocate for. I mean, we're getting out two or three days earlier this year because we had that at our disposal this year. Uh, again, not a blizzard bag, but for remote learning, which is, you know, going back to what we did for this year. To me, that's one of the silver linings of this, that would, would be a great tool to have. And again, not, we can still have our traditional snowmen, but it's still for people. But to have that tool in the toolbox, I thought was a great extra tool to have. And, you know, like I said, at that time, instead of a, a delay, you know, where you just have to say everyone on right at the time, you get full classes all day long, you know, in some ways, that's better education. Um, and we could do it in North Reading. It would work for us. But what I saw with the heat day, I think to foreshadow that that might not be allowed. So we'll see.
Okay, and then, I go, fall update as well, and we'll go, we'll go back and we're just kinda going and trying.
Sure. So, so the fall twenty twenty-one, um, you know, some of the, we just talked a little bit about possible COVID-nineteen procedures, so I think I've discussed that. I just wanna talk, touch base on the bus thing and make sure this is clear. So, you know, with our start time changes, with our shift institute here that provides many advantages, um, from, everything from what's possible through collaboration staff, by having programming, scheduling, um, it, it, it certainly poses some challenges. We've definitely talked about the arrival of dismissal, and I have to put something out to the parents. The very first thing is making sure we're following the rules that are in place currently, um, to make things flow. We, I've been outside almost every afternoon and observed this. I've had the police, the fire, uh, chief suffer here, um, and their teams. I've got the town administrator who's here, um, the principals, Sean Clay, Michael Connolly. As, as bad as it can get on some of these days, um, it, it's all over within ten minutes or so. So there's, there's always gonna be a backup. Most of what you see as a backup are people who get here early waiting for the dismissal to go through. Um, we did uncover a couple of things with the lights that will be better for next year. And there are many more students who are getting picked up this year and not taking the bus due to COVID. So we're in kind of an interesting place where we, we've increased the number of buses, as you know. We want more students to ride the buses than this year because we want more bus ridership, and we think there will be. So we're kind of getting to that sweet spot right now where there's room on the buses. Um, we've, we've already passed our, our deadlines for, for late fees. So everyone who wants to ride the bus right now can, and that's good. The more people that ride the bus, the less cars in here, which is also good. Um, but what I wanna make sure I present to you tonight are a couple of things to just to think about. We are at a place though where every year there are people that are late. And let's say there's fifty people that in late August, they just ignored all the warnings. They don't care about the late fee. They wanna pay, and they get on the bus. The problem this year, um, is that we may need to have a waitlist. And so I wanted to, before we put that out, before we talked about it, because the problem will be with the two tiers, there's just not going to be room on the bus. And, um, and or it will make runs very long, even, even to add those spaces that we do have. And so the, you know, the question become, I just wanted to be clear that though we've had late fees, we've never really been in a position where you said to someone who's very late, we need to put you on a waitlist. Um, and so that is a possibility. Now, we could say at that point, there's a financial, you know, do we have to go out and try to get another bus? Because we know that's very expensive. Um, and the other issue is that, you know, something you would do at that point is do you then a couple of start times? But that causes a lot of other ripple effects. And I just wanted to put that out there though. If there is a huge traffic issue, if there is a, um, a busing issue, I would wanna do the right thing and try to make adjustments. But I wanted to just ask that question. And maybe it's something we, we think about and talk about at, at another meeting, but is there, um, a preferred strategy that the committee would recommend if we were to uncouple, or, you know, do we say we don't, that's the last resort? Do we, do we get extra buses before we divide? Or do we separate middle and high school? And if we did, would we wanna talk about whether it's middle or high school that goes? Because there's the, the health and the size considerations, and then there's also other logistical considerations.
I, I, I wanted to clarify this for you.
What are they?
So we're primarily talking about high school, middle school.
Yeah, we are.
Where.
We are.
And they were really talking about seven through twelve, where we have no obligation to bus that.
Yeah.
And we've sent out a request to get the number for people.
Yeah.
Everybody who has requested a bus pass as of the deadline, as of the date that we had to do the budget for our town meeting.
Yeah.
It's already been approved.
Yeah.
Every one of those people has, so if they're legally required to be bused, they would. Every one of those people has, so if they're legally required to be bused, they will be bused. If they apply for a bus pass in time, they will be bused. We're only talking about people that might be late to ask for a request afterwards.
Right.
Correct, okay.
Correct, if someone were to.
A couple shattered our mouth, but like.
Someone were to move in who's legally qualified for it, we would, we would have to find.
And sixth graders would have to potentially, if they live outside of it.
Do not.
And I think that's a little bit different, like even if they're late, if we're legally required to get it in, I think we have to either way, but.
Okay, two questions.
Yeah.
One, if it was a handful, could you use the athletic bus that, the multi-tooling to do a run?
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Okay, and two, is this based on the limited seating because you have to have things in between the two of them?
This is not a COVID restriction, no, this is just the pure numbers. You know, like I said, there's a sweet spot and we're well within it. As you know, Michael's very conservative, always thinking ahead and just wants to be clear that, you know, we had a line that we want, we wanna basically tell people that there may be a waitlist and that's not something we've introduced before. You know, and we may have alluded to it, but, you know, we're afraid that some people may not take it seriously and just expect to get on the bus late August. And there's a, there's a real chance with the two tiers, and that's a big difference to go from fourth tier to two, that it might be a little different this year. So again, right now, we're still, there's still some wiggle room, but we're just trying to be looking forward.
So the seating, sorry, on the bus, just to follow up.
Yeah.
That's the question I took away, the seating on the bus is no longer restricted?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, th- those restrictions would not be as they've been this year.
Okay, thank you.
And that's actually changed already to allow us to bring all the kids back in person again.
You talked about uncoupling, you're talking about changing start times.
Yeah.
I am. I mean, it seems to me that having made the decision, the start times, these are the start times we want to have. And we have to understand what the impact is to, I guess it depends on the number. If there's a hundred people, you know, and that's one thing, but it, it would, it would seem like to change around the schedule because ten people have to be, we don't want ten people being on wait lists. Seems to be tail wagging the dog a little bit now, so.
Okay, I mean, I think, by only, just a comment, number one, maybe need to very much encourage carpooling in some way. Even if it's like a roll your drop off for somebody to carpool or something like that. But, you know, then you could encourage seniors to maybe bring friends, maybe you get a kind of parking spot if you bring a friend.
Seniors can't, the laws don't allow them to carpool when they're.
I don't know, okay.
Yeah.
As a family, families can do that.
And parents can carpool, but seniors cannot have, not down there in the park because, yeah.
When you're, when you're.
When you're. I think overall, I would say the last thing we should do is adjust the start time for the buses or even for traffic in the morning. I mean, I think we're a small district compared to a lot of districts. There are a lot of districts whose high schools are the size of our middle and high school. And somehow they get tossed off. And so if there has to be maybe an earlier cutoff, you extend it an extra five minutes or something, I think there's gonna be adjustments for that. You know, like if it, if it needs to be like if school's starting at eight thirty, then maybe some people can drop off between eight ten and eight twenty, and then some at eight twenty to eight thirty. I think that's where I would go in trying to figure out the drop off part for the buses. I know before we, before we proposed the additional two buses, we talked about maybe doing an extra run or something. What I wonder is if maybe there's a run that is close to the school that could potentially be done afterwards? Like if maybe one bus gets in, you know, ten minutes early, that, that bus can go out and then just pick up. Maybe like out of ten buses, we can get eleven runs. If something like that were to happen, if we start seeing it like, we've talked before about maybe having a couple of extra runs in some way. Maybe if, again, if it comes up as an issue, maybe we could get eleven or twelve runs out of ten buses. I would go there. I would, I would change the start time at last because we're doing it for educational reasons. And so because somebody who didn't apply on time, didn't get a bus pass, probably got to reason to change the start time for everybody in the district. So that's just my thought.
I appreciate that, Peter.
Yeah. Daniel, you got?
I, I actually agree, I, at the last resort, I would wanna change the start time. You know, I, I think it's different when maybe someone's late and we're required to buss them, we really would have to think about that. For folks that are sort of elected and that type of thing, you know, process is a process, I don't think it sounds harsh there. And I hate that we have to have a waitlist, but to stop playing, we could obviously look at something, but I'm more concerned about the kids that we actually are required to buss. You know, I know we had, to your point about extra run, I know we had this concept of having this later bus, okay to stay at the school later, like, I don't know if we're, we have that run. I don't know pop per run or if it's just pop by bus, but it doesn't really matter. But yeah, if we could do something like that, I think we should just look long and hard at the other scenarios versus changing start times.
Appreciate that. So, you know, we just wanted to be, have a discussion before we put it on the letter. And we didn't want you to say, what is this waitlist that's not been something we've done? But we also, I wanted to hear too that, you know, that we're committed to this change and that, you know, there's gonna be some growth pains. And I think a lot of people right now are in a line for middle school pickup, let's say, and saying, oh, it's gonna be twice as long next year. And it, it won't be, it'll be different. We have some strategies, we have some ideas, we've met with police and fire, as I mentioned, we have all different ideas. We're gonna be, have a working group over the summer that's gonna share this out. My plan would be to have some detailed forums with some maps and guidance and signage. We have some, some different ideas about how to, you know, make this a little bit smoother next year. But there's gonna, the first step, as I mentioned in my emails with families, is following those rules that are in place. I've watched, you know, four cars queuing up where they shouldn't be slowing down an entire run. And then you have like a school bus coming up and doing a three-point turn that just slows everything down. So there's those things that are, that are happening as well, that we gotta make sure we improve upon.
Rolling drop off, so the car doesn't actually stop all the way.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I, I thought, you know, Michael especially isn't able to be here tonight, but he wanted to make sure that, that we did discuss it before that went out. But we are gonna be sending that out soon as a reminder. And again, as you know, we will work, if we, if there's a way to make it work for everyone, we are absolutely gonna do that first and foremost. But there is a chance that we may need to have a waitlist.
I mean, and there could potentially be one bus that is not doing a drop off, like, or finishes early at the elementary school. That could maybe get over and do a first run and then do a later run or something. If it works, it works, I would look at that.
Yeah, it's tight and, and, you know, I would, I would let Michael, but it's very tight to do that. On the other hand, you could do a late one, but then those kids are later, so it's, 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 it is tricky, but I, I do think we'll figure it out. But I do think there's gonna be some growth pains with it.
Chris, Chris, I don't wanna offend you, but I'll see you, or do you have any comments with that?
No, I mean, I agree with what's said, I think, I think you guys are right to point out that we're making this change first and foremost for educational reasons. Not because we prefer a different start time or it makes our lives easier. And as long as that's clear and consistent, then, then I, I think logically you have to say, if, if we're making sure that we're busing kids that are legally required to be bused and that anybody else has access to get a pass within a fair timeframe can get it. And we're dealing with difficulty, people that, that don't choose to fit, don't fit into either of those categories, then the educational value of changing the start time should, should have precedent. So I, yeah, I would agree and, and, you know, changing, changing start time should be the last pause. So that should be because we can't make it work for the students that we're required to make it work for under any circumstance. Uh, yeah, um, that's, that's it. And maybe we could chip in and buy Dr. Daley like a, a crossing guard uniform to wear and help, help get traffic organized.
Yeah, we, I appreciate that, cause we, we have talked about, you know, what a crossing guard would, would need to be, what they could do. And it, it was clarified for me that, you know, a crossing guard can't direct traffic, you know, so that's, but a crossing guard can hold students back and, you know, so hold the students back so that the traffic continues, which is different than sort of you go, you know, stop, go.
And even at a crosswalk situation, they could say, you need to wait, let a few more cars go. And then when they step up to the crosswalk, the traffic has to stop because that's the rule, but the crossing guard doesn't do that.
So even at the, you know, at our school, we've got three crosswalks, we've got one right for gymnastics and we've got one in the middle. Other days when we've really been out there enforcing everyone cross in the middle, it does free up some of the right-left turns. The other thing that people need to realize as well is that this year, because we don't have the ability to use the locker rooms, we've had kids coming and going, getting changed at home, getting dropped off again. And other kids that are coming back in from the parking lot, one after their car's coming back in to grab equipment and stuff. So that kind of traffic is, is not the same as a typical year. So there's a lot of variables this year, it's really hard to judge to say that, you know, it's gonna look a certain way. So we're hopeful that we'll make this work through a lot of our plans and ideas. We want to offer people some options for, for drop off pickup and, you know, we'll have more on that soon. So we're certainly gonna be working hard on this over the summer and ensuring that, so thank you for that opportunity, okay?
So that completes the second number three of the new business. We'll go back to the third number three after we go back to number two first, so.
Those three, I, oh wow.
As far as the, uh, North Reading, as far as the North Reading Education Association contract, uh, we're gonna pass a little bit generally, but I'll just say that we've been working and meeting with NREA. We essentially have a tentative agreement, there's one or two final provisions we're just cleaning up in there. And so we haven't had the time to finalize it and, you know, we know that the NREA needs to vote on it. And so once that happens at our next meeting, we should be able to hopefully approve it, but we've been working with them and just about there. Okay, moving on, NRPS twenty twenty five.
Three, two, yeah.
Three.
You sure have that one, huh? Uh, so I just wanted to update everyone on something that I shared out last week, I think you may have seen it, but, and I alluded to it earlier. But as a part of our, our visiting process for, for this, we're looking to do a, where do we wanna be in NRPS, you know, in two thousand twenty five? And so it's called the Back to the Future Protocol that all our administrators are going through, where you think about and you prescribe in the present tense, here's where we are in two thousand twenty five. This is what it looks like, feels like, sounds like in our school. And then you go back to today and you say, here's what it looks like now in the present tense. And then that, you know, our goal then is to how do we connect the dots between the two? And so as we were doing this with the administrative team in preparation for our retreat, it really just sort of clicked with me that these are questions that I need to ask of others as well. So I thought I would have maybe some of the student council students, maybe a couple of teachers, maybe, you know, one or two parents that would be interested. We've had over eighty-five people have already completed the survey, so.
By first?
Uh, you were not, but you were on there, I appreciate that. So, um, everyone is invited, I'm going to try to do a bit of a discussion. I feel that this also addressed a need in the community, just from the feedback I've seen, some of what has been in the newspapers about what schools are doing, what they're not doing. I think there's been some of that conversation that I think people are just looking to be involved in. So I think this will be an opportunity to talk about what the schools are doing and what we should be doing moving forward. And also to clarify what we're not doing and what we shouldn't be. I think all of those topics are important, I think there's a lot of opinions and conversations that need to be had. I think it'll be a, a healthy forum to do that and a good way to do that as well. So we're gonna run a session nine to eleven in the morning for folks that that works better for, and also one in the evening for folks that that works better for. I want to get lots of different voices. Again, it's not gonna be everything that's discussed or presented is where we're gonna go. Administrative leaders are still going to make decisions, but it's just gonna be more, more informed. And I think that, you know, from what I see in the early data, there's nothing there that we really haven't come up with. And it's not, it's, it's, there's nothing different, but it does reinforce some of the directions we're going. And there are some, I'll be honest with you, there was, there was one in there that I was able to address immediately. It was, not only is it something that we should be looking about for the future, but my thought was, oh, this already is in place and this is from a student. And I said to the student, um, the student needs to know that this is already in place for, for her safety. And so I went and, you know, addressed this with, with her, with Dr. O'Connell and with the student yesterday to make sure that the student understood. Thank you for doing that, thank you for bringing up, but here's some options for you that exist right now. So it was a great, it was great for me to experience that and I'm, I'm looking forward to this conference. So in addition to that, not just our leadership team, you know, our administrative council, principals, directors, but our extended leadership team with assistant principals. And hopefully it's gonna also include our extended, extended leadership team of our curriculum leaders as well, for a third day in August. So that, you know, we can have even more ownership and binding into our, into our district vision, so.
Well, that's true. Sign them as well, so. Yeah. We'll probably say anything else with that.
Are you kidding me?
Now, general meetings, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna hear from you, Paul.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna.
If you don't shut up.
Yeah, I'll do a little bit of presentation, some breakout groups, and then there's, I think there's a good pool of forums, you get into some small groups, you fill, you fill out the protocols. So my thought would be, I would do one with everyone and then here's the link, if you wanna do more, do more. And then the more that we have, the more that we bring back to the retreat or something, so.
Well, I mean, with that in mind, if you need to use us for anything, run groups or whatever, please feel free to, I mean, Janine, maybe I'm gonna hurt her that first, but if you, if you need help on any of those things, happy to assist you.
Thank you. Yeah, I gotta, I have to wrap my head around a little bit about how I'm gonna deal with these numbers, but it's a good problem to have, so I'm excited.
Excellent, um, moving on, we have no minutes? I guess we have no budget update because we have no Mr. Connolly.
We do not, and that, that should be reflected in, so I think like authority was, uh.
Oh, there wasn't a budget update in the, in the package, but he didn't say on the budget update.
Uh, not at this time, I, I think Michael wanted us to do this next time.
Yeah.
I think that got, that got sent out and was included.
Okay, and then, staffing, any update?
No, this time.
Are there going to be, I wanna bring anything up, but I mean, is there gonna be an update on the middle school, like principal, at a later meeting?
Um, yeah, I can, I can share that out.
I don't want to say that's anything officially yet or done.
Yeah, no, I can officially communicate that out right now.
Okay.
The, Ms. Oliver, that I was selected as the next president, thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, excellent, and, and I would point out that was an external search done.
Yeah.
To remind me, how many, I mean, how many candidates were there for the position?
I don't have that exact number, it's what I did not review, but there were, there were multiple interviews conducted, internal and external, I think, yeah. I can, I can look it up right now, but I don't know.
No, I mean, just to point out, because whenever things go on, I think sometimes people understand that there was a process done, so. But we appreciate that Ms. Oliver stepping up as the interim basis and, you know, Park was trying to do a good job with the interim for telling the day after don't lie and don't do the whole process, yeah, especially with external, but I'm happy to hear that. She did a wonderful job at the end of the day, so congratulations to Ms. Oliver.
And I've been thinking about the external versus internal question. And this is just a general comment, no, no criticism or discussion about what you, what we've done this year. But it seems to me that if you're doing, if you're just trying to, if you're doing a search, if you, and you wanna start with an internal search. If, I think I've got this right, my head. If there's only one candidate and you're okay, and because of the nature of the position, you would be okay with one internal candidate? And you would be okay with making that higher, assuming they also feel like they're qualified? That's fine, but if you feel like ahead of time that you're doing an internal search, but there's only one candidate that will do an external search? Does that feel like maybe you should just do an external search? Or do you feel like you always have to try to do that internal search? You understand what I'm saying?
I do, um, the problem is you don't know that there's only gonna be one internal candidate.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
When we, when we did the interim position, there were multiple internal candidates.
Yeah, no, I guess, I guess I'm saying, regardless of what you think makes you the number.
Yeah.
Just thinking ahead, if you think, well, if there's only one, then I'll probably end up doing an external. Doesn't that kind of mean maybe you should do an external?
Well, it's just a, well, it's just a general. It's problematic because you don't wanna say, well, I interview Diana and, well, I don't think you're good enough to hire you without talking to somebody else, but. but maybe I'll hire you after I talk to other people. Whereas like if I was like, oh, Janine's good enough to hire without talking to anybody else. And that's, that's a challenge that you run into, I think. Uh, I think, and I would go one step further and say, overall with, especially with an entry level position like a vice prin, a vice principal.
Yeah.
I think we all see the value in promoting from within when there's qualified candidates. But with doing that, you know, a vice principal is really the first level of the administration. So anywhere, at any time there's to be an external search, I would think it would be for some of the entry level positions, because that's what you get people into. And maybe it comes from teachers' positions, maybe it comes from other districts that are vice principals that want to come here. But even for other ones, I think that, I think that if they're a great candidate, they're going to, you know, personally, I think that your experience in district, we already know a lot about you, that already should give you a pretty good advantage. And if that's not enough to, you know, to win the position, then maybe it shouldn't be that position. And also, I think it gives a candidate that, that gets the position a lot of, you know, authority, um, you know, because they weren't the best candidate for it and it wasn't because you only limited it. And that's why I, I was the best of the small group that you looked at. And we're saying you are the best one of any candidate that we could find, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a, it's a, right at the moment, it's just a theory of discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I hear those points. I think in my experience, there's, there are reasons to do different things. Um, I think you get different types of internal candidates to apply when they know it's an internal search. There's someone who is an up and, a teacher, classroom teacher, looking to become an administrator for the first time, um, may not apply if they know it's an external search. And I think that discourages them from getting that experience. Um, not that you can't tell people you should still apply, but I, I think it's, it's a different. So I, I, you know, I think of the last two we had, some of the candidates would not have, they would not have applied for the external search because they would have been going up against sitting principal, let's say for the bachelor and principal position. You have a sitting assistant principal going for a principal. We had some teachers that wanted to, to go forward to see what that looked like. They, they just would, probably would not have happened, um, which is not always the best uh thing to do. And I, I think the interims are a little different than the permanents and, so, yeah, I think, and, and I also think there's a little bit about your, your, you know, when you put it out there externally and then you keep hiring internally, then when you do go externally and you need someone externally and you don't have internal, you do have a bit of a reputation that you, you can't, you're just doing external just to do them and you keep promoting from within as opposed to being a little more transparent about it. That we have an internal search, people see that and then they see that that didn't go well or, or they're reposting it and there's more of a, an opportunity. So I think, I think there's a lot to be considered. I think it's an ongoing conversation.
Yeah.
Um.
And I, okay, but just railing the uh.
No, I think it's a great conversation. It's something I've thought a lot about. Um, I also think, you know, I, I have a lot of thoughts about the searches that we've led and, and what you see. Sometimes, like I mentioned, it's some people that are runners up for one position. By the time that next one rolls around, then they've had that experience, other developed, and they're ready then to go to the next. So, you know, overall, I think there's times and places where we need uh diversity in many different ways, the non-North Reading experience, I'll say. And there's other times when you really want to promote within and, and uh, and, and see those pieces um come together. And there are young teachers now that are going to be great administrators in our district, and I want them to see that there's room to grow in our district as well, um, and not have to go elsewhere, so.
That was it, the solid out. And.
We'll have a more formal one next time, yeah, this was a little.
No, that's all right. Hey, I didn't want to jump ahead and.
No, that was, that was a good question.
Um, is it donation, bring out one?
Yes, I moved, as the school committee votes with seventh gratitude, a donation of $1,000 from Shortwell to be applied to student scholarship benefit graduating seniors at high.
My second? Okay, from Janine, Janine to Chris. Um, and any discussion, I'll just say, for people that don't know, Shortwell is one of the youth program. It was very nice that they're giving that for schools. Do a roll call vote. Rich, hi. Janine.
Hi.
Diana.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
And then I as well, five zero, thank you.
I moved, as the school committee votes with seventh gratitude, a donation of $70 from the JT Hood School Power Association to benefit the project of the trampoline at the Hood School.
Okay.
Question here?
I have another, I have one question. Um, is it one of the little round ones that you do in the gym or is it a really big one with the nuts? And what is the liability, I just out of curiosity?
I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not sure what was right, I'm sorry. Um, I can, I can look into that and learn a little bit more.
Any doubt? Yeah. Okay.
Hold a second.
Janine, Janine, they both know that school.
Yeah, what I.
Information that we won't be stopped level.
No, no, I was just, I'm curious about the trampoline.
Yeah, if it's, if it's, if it's the $70 covering it, it's going to be a small one for specialized classroom. I'd imagine with that, that's just, it probably we're talking about here for students that need uh support, but I can look into that a little bit more.
It's, it's sort of the uh, the hood mascot can do flips to the.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't know if it's one of the big ones that, that you have outside and uh.
The janitor's side, we.
To my knowledge, this, this would be a small classroom uh, sort of, it's a support.
Okay. Roll call vote, Rich. Hi. Janine.
Hi.
Diana.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
And then I as well, at the five zero.
I moved, as the school committee votes with seventh gratitude, an in-kind donation of assorted thank you gifts for teacher appreciation for a long and difficult year valued at $3,540 for the, tolling 118 gifts from the kindness exchange to benefit the North Reading High School. Is that a fundraising process to kind of.
I, I believe, I believe it is. Um, yeah, I think it's something that we certainly appreciate and, and also want to revisit and, and make sure. I think, I think some of this, due to COVID, it's very much appreciated. I think we do need to make sure we're having conversations with this group in the future to make sure that all the uh regulations, route ethics and everything, you know, I'm confident everything goes well this year, but we want to make sure we check in with them. Um, if this is to continue, it's quite a, a great gift, quite a, quite an amount. And uh, we really appreciate all the great things they did, so.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, motion, we got a second, any discussion? Vote, Rich. Hi. Janine.
Hi.
Diana.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
And I as well, five zero. Very much. This is donation, that's going to be the update for John. And it's been reported, Dr. Daley.
Uh, not at this time, I think I covered some of those things right.
First, Ronden?
Not at this.
So future business tomorrow is graduation, so I don't, don't be aware, Chris, when we said it, but um it's still right at 5:30 ideally. They'll be lining up and do the procession down and graduation begins at six. June 21st at 6:30 PM is the next meeting, school improvement plan. July 26th at 6:30 PM is superintendent goals and school committee goals. Thursday, August 12th at 6:30 PM is fall 2021 planning, school committee goals meeting. I will try to figure out from the staff whether we can have promote participation on June 21st. I think we should, we should plan on still having a Google meet for people that want to attend. The only thing that will change is Chris will have to come in if, if, if it's in person. And we may have to allow the public in, that's what we have to just figure out. But I, I, I still think we want to allow this and, you know, as I said, the open, open meeting will allow the chair to allow anything to be streamed live if it's, if we approve it, I approve it. I think that's a good, good thing to do. So I think there still will be a Google meet for anybody that wants to follow along from home. But the question is whether we have to be there, whether.
Well, and the third part then is, would that all, would they be allowed to, to.
Yeah, well, again, I think it's up to us and how we want to do it. And so I would say that. It's, it's, we can still allow people to.
But are the other two virtuals in the 26th or the 12th?
Yeah, but again, I think. It would carry, we don't know right now because the.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It, it, it's, but there was a proposal bill to push it back to, I think, September, which would mean that if that bill passes, we could do virtual over the summer. And, you know, potentially, I would just say potentially, maybe on the June 21st one, but maybe the July and August one, we could, if it's allowed to be virtual, maybe we'll all do virtual and not have to make everybody come into schools, but I don't know. We will see. I'll try to check those tests tomorrow. Okay, any other questions? If there's nothing else, I will, you know, just adjourn. All second? Okay. Almost, Janine.
Hi.
Rich. Hi. Diana.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
And then I as well, five zero. Thank you, everyone. Good night.